is to speak on healing. Couple of things that I need to let you know that the syllabus for this classes will be available next week, as well as the books will be available on next week, amen? Alright, let's pray and get right into it. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this time together. We open our hearts to your word and ask that your spirit guide us into all truth. We believe you are our healer and that healing is a part of your provision for us through Jesus. Let faith arise in this place. Father, as you increase, let me decrease. Father, let you and you alone be seen and we just give you the praise and the honor and the glory for it all. In Jesus' name we pray, amen? Well, again, as I shared, my assignment this evening is to speak on healing. You know, we hear a lot, I'm gonna take this off. We hear a lot about illnesses and sicknesses these days. Stories about people suffering sickness and disease. You know, it's all over social media, broadcast channels, and television news. However, it's time to shift the focus and tell the world the news. The good news about what God says regarding healing. During this course, we're going to address several questions and misconceptions about divine healing. Some of these questions include, is it God's will to heal? And some of these questions I'm sure you've heard. I know that I have. Is it God's will to heal? Does God use illness and disease to teach or correct his children? What do you do if you receive prayer for healing? And don't notice or feel any changes in your physical symptoms? Have you heard some of those questions before? Amen? So these are just a few questions we will be answering according to the word of God. I hope you have your bibles, because we will be going to the word of God, amen? So according to your syllabus which you will be getting, it states that this course will cover how healing was provided in the redemptive work of Jesus Christ and is available to every believer. Let me say that again. It is concerning the redemptive work of Jesus Christ and is available to every believer, amen? So let's look at healing is God's provision. God has always been opposed to sickness, not in favor of it. Even in the Old Testament, he always made provision for his covenant people to be healed. If sickness was his will, he wouldn't have made that provision, amen? So God has a redemptive plan, amen? Turn with me to Exodus 23 and 25. Again, that's Exodus 23 and 25. And I'll be reading from the New King James Version. And it says, "So you shall serve the Lord your God, and he will bless your bread and your water; and I will take sickness away from the midst of you," amen? So we see here in Exodus 23 and 25, this particular verse is part of a covenant agreement between God and Israel. After freeing them from Egypt, God promises to bless them and protect them if they remain faithful. It's a verse about trust, obedience, and the reliability of God's provision during uncertain times, amen? So we're gonna break that verse down. It says, "Serve the Lord your God." This implies covenant relationship and obedience. "He will bless your bread and water." God promises provision and daily sustenance. "I will take sickness away from the midst of you." This is a direct promise of healing and health, amen? He says, "I will take sickness away from the midst of you." God's redemptive plan. Let's turn to Isaiah 53, 4, and 5. Again, that's Isaiah 53, 4, and 5. And I'll be reading from the King James Version. It reads, "Surely he has born our griefs and carried our sorrows; yet we did esteem him, stricken, smitten of God, and afflicted; but he was wounded for our transgressions; he was bruised for our iniquities; the chastisement of our peace was upon him; and with his stripes..." Hallelujah! We are healed, amen? Hallelujah! Now I'm gonna read that in the Amplified Classic Version. It says, "Surely," not maybe, "surely, he has born our griefs, sicknesses, weaknesses, distresses, and carried our sorrows and pains of punishment; yet we ignorantly considered him stricken, smitten, and afflicted by God, as if with leprosy." Ah, but it says, "But he was wounded for our transgressions; he was bruised for our guilt and iniquities; the chastisement, needful to obtain peace and well-being for us, was upon him; and with his stripes that wounded him, we are healed and made whole." Hallelujah! So guess what? Over 2,000 years ago, we were, it says, "we were healed." So that means if we were healed, we are healed, hallelujah! So God had a redemptive plan, amen? Did you know that one of God's seven redemptive names is Jehovah Rapha? Which means, "I am the Lord that heals thee." And did you know that Rapha is also a technical word for physician? Isn't that something? He says that I am the healer, and Rapha is a technical word for physician. Let's go to Exodus 15 and 26. Again, Exodus 15 and 26. And it reads, "And said," this is King James, "If thou wilt diligently hearken to the voice of the Lord thy God, and wilt do that which is right in his sight, and wilt give ear to his commandments, and keep his statutes, I will put none of these diseases upon thee, which I have brought upon the Egyptians; for I am the Lord that healeth thee," amen? Now take a listen to what it says in the English Standard Version. It says, "Saying, if you will diligently listen to the voice of the Lord your God, and do that which is right in his eyes, and give ear to his commandments, and keep his statutes, I will put none of these diseases on you, that I put on the Egyptians; for I am the Lord your healer." That very last line, it says, "For I am the Lord your healer." God reveals himself as Jehovah Rapha, the Lord who heals. Healing isn't just something God does, it's a part of who he is. It's God's nature to heal. Healing is the will of God for you and for me, amen? Take a listen to how some of the bibles, different bibles, translate that. The New English Bible says, "I am the Lord your healer." The Lesser Bible says, "For I am the Lord your physician." The Basic English Version says, "I am the Lord your life-giver." Smith Goodspeed says, "I am the Lord that make you immune to diseases." And lastly, Knox says, "I, the Lord, that will only bring you health," amen? So we see here in the word of God, God did not put sickness or disease upon Israel or the Egyptians. It was Satan, the God, the lowercase g of this world, who makes man sick. Jehovah Rapha declares, "He is the healer." He said, "I am the one that healeth thee." Not bring sickness and disease up on you, I'm the healer, amen? And did you know that healing is a benefit? Hallelujah! Healing is a benefit. If we, you will turn to Psalms 103, verses 1 through 3. Again, that's Psalms 103, verses 1 through 3. This is one of my favorite scriptures. I call it the benefit package, amen? King James Version says, "Bless the Lord, O my soul, and all that is within me, bless his holy name. Bless the Lord, O my soul, and forget not all his benefits." Then he starts listing them. He says, "Who forgivest all of thine iniquities? Who health all thy diseases?" And I'mma go on. "Who redeemeth thy life from destruction? Who crowneth thee with loving kindness and tender mercies? Who satisfies thy mouth with good things, so that thy youth is renewed like the eagles?" Amen? That's a benefit! We see in the word of God that we have benefits. When we are in covenant relationship with God, we have benefits. It's the benefit package, amen? Hallelujah! Now I'm gonna read that in the Amplified Classic Version, 103. It says, "Bless, affectionately praise the Lord, O my soul, and all that is deepest within me, bless his holy name. Bless, affectionately, gratefully praise the Lord, O my soul, and forget not one of his benefits. Don't forget one. Who forgives every one of your iniquities? Who heals each one of..." Hallelujah! "...all of your diseases." What's left after all? Nothing! It says, "He heals us of all our diseases. Who redeems your life from the pit and corrupt corruption. Who beautifies, dignifies, and crowns you with loving kindness and tender mercies. Who satisfies your mouth with necessity and desire at your personal age and situation." Whatever the situation is, whatever age that is, he satisfies your mouth. He is good. He says, "He's with good, so that your youth renewed is like the eagles. Strong, overcoming, and soaring." Hallelujah! You know how the eagle, the eagle soars up above? And that's what he's saying here. He will satisfy your mouth. He will give you what you need in whatever situation that he is. It's part of the benefit package, amen? Hallelujah! Now we're gonna go to 1 Peter 2:24. Turn there with me, 1 Peter 2:24. Say amen when you have it. We're gonna, I'm gonna start with the King James Version. 1 Peter 2:24. Most of us probably know that by heart, amen? It reads, "Who his own self bare our sins in his own body on the tree." Hallelujah! "That we, being dead to sins, should live unto righteousness, by whose stripes ye were healed." There it is again. It says, "ye were healed." It's not talking about you, it's something that's coming. It's something that is already done. It's already past tense. He did it over 2,000 years ago. Hallelujah! It says, "by whose stripes ye were healed," amen? Now Matthew 8:17 in the King James Version says, "That it might be fulfilled, which was spoken by Isaiah, the prophet, saying himself took our infirmities and bare our sicknesses." Thank God! The Bible says, "himself." Jesus took our infirmities and bare our sicknesses. "And by whose stripes ye were healed." If you were healed by Jesus' stripes, then? Then you are healed now by his stripes, amen? We know that it is God's will to heal his people, because healing is in God's redemptive plan, hallelujah! We already read the scripture, "himself took on our infirmities and bare our sicknesses." That was Matthew 8:17. So we know that healing is in the redemption that Jesus provided for us. We also know that it is God's will to heal his people, because sickness and disease come from Satan. And God does not want us to have anything that comes from Satan. Reverend Hagen in the book says, "We really don't have any business with something that doesn't belong to us," amen? We really don't have any business with something that does not belong to us. Sickness and disease doesn't belong to us. They're of the devil. But, there's that word, but, healing does belong to us. Jesus purchased healing for us in the plan of redemption through his death, burial, and resurrection, hallelujah! Jesus purchased healing for us in the plan of redemption. He hung, bled, and he died on Calvary's tree for us. God's provision for his covenant people is healing, amen? His covenant provision is healing. Let's go to Deuteronomy, chapter 7, and we're gonna read verse 9, and then we're gonna read 13 through 15. Deuteronomy 7, verse 9, and then we're gonna drop down to 13 through 15. Say amen if you have it. I'm gonna be reading from the King James Version. It says, "Know therefore that the Lord thy God, he is God, the faithful God, which keepeth covenant and mercy with them that love him, and keep his commandments to a thousand generations." Ooh! "Keepeth covenant and mercy with them that love him, and keep his commandments to a thousand generations." Drop down to verse 13, and it reads, "And he will love thee, and bless thee, and multiply thee. He will also bless the fruit of thy womb and the fruit of thy land, thy corn and thy wine and thine oil, the increase of thy kind, and the flocks of thy sheep, in the land which he swear unto thy fathers to give thee." Verse 14, "Thou shalt be blessed above all people; there shall not be male or female barren among you or among your cattle." But verse 15, take a listen. It says, "And the Lord will take away from thee all sickness." Again, what's left after all? Nothing! It said, "The Lord will take away from thee all sickness, and will put none of the evil diseases of Egypt, which thou knowest, upon thee; but will lay them upon all them that hate thee." So God is a covenant-keeping God. Can we say that again? God is a covenant-keeping God that doesn't change. Hallelujah! You know, in today's time, everything seems to be changing and moving and switching around, but God doesn't change. He doesn't change, hallelujah! He is just the same today as he was back then, and that he will be forevermore, hallelujah! In Malachi 3 and 6, in the King James Version, it says, "For I am the Lord; I change not." That's part A, we just gonna stop right there. He says, "For I am the Lord." He's telling you in his word. You don't have to guess about it, you don't have to wonder what it's saying. Could it be saying this? Could he change? Could it be something different from one day to the next, hallelujah? But he tells you in his word. He says, "I am the Lord, and I change not," hallelujah! Well, God is the same God now as he was then. The Bible says he doesn't change. So when the Bible says it, that's the word of God. And like the old folks used to say, you can take it to the bank, because it's the truth, hallelujah! It says, "he doesn't change." Aren't you glad about that? Aren't you glad that he doesn't change? Aren't you glad that when you can go to the Father and know that he is the same loving and merciful and tender God that doesn't change, doesn't turn his back on us, doesn't have an attitude with us when we come to him? But he just comes. He says, "Come, come, come, come on, come on, come on. What is it that you need? What is it that you want?" He said, "I don't change." He said, "my word doesn't change," hallelujah! He said, "I'm just the same today." I don't know, some of you might remember that old song, say, "He is just the same today." And I started laughing when I thought about it. I'm like Bishop. I couldn't remember most of the words, amen? But what I did remember was the line that says, "He is just the same today." Hallelujah! And it says something in that song about healing. If he healed, then he'll heal today. But I'm gonna find the words to that song, hallelujah! Amen? So God was against sin in the Old Testament, and he's against sin in the New Testament. He was against sickness in the Old Testament, hallelujah! And he's against sin in the new, I mean sickness in the New Testament. He made provision for healing in the Old Testament, and he made provision in the New Testament. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Did he keep his word? Did he keep his covenant promises? Did he do just what he said he was gonna do? Hallelujah, yes he did. So sickness came to Israel through disobedience. This is the old covenant here. Let's turn to Deuteronomy 28 and 15. Again, that's Deuteronomy 28 and 15. King James Version says, if you're there, say amen? "But it shall come to pass, if thou wilt hearken unto the voice of the Lord thy God, to observe, to do all his commandments and his statutes, which I command thee this day, that all these curses shall come upon thee and overtake thee." I wanna read something that Reverend Hagen said. He said, "God told the children of Israel in Deuteronomy 28 and 15, 'It shall come to pass, if thou wilt not hearken unto the voice of the Lord thy God, to observe, to do all his commandments and his statutes, which I command thee this day, that all these curses shall come upon thee and overtake thee.'" Listen carefully. This verse doesn't mean that if the children of Israel disobeyed God, that God would send curses upon them. It simply states that if they disobeyed God, the curses would be able to come upon them, because disobedience takes God's people out from under his protection. By way of a little illustration here. If you saw your child or your baby about to put his hand on a hot stove, you'd warn him, wouldn't you? You'd say, "Honey or baby, don't do that. You'll get burned." But if your child disobeyed you and put his hand on the stove anyway and burned himself, that wouldn't mean you commissioned or authorized that. Indirectly, you permitted him to choose whether or not he would obey you. But you warned him. What would happen if he did touch the hot stove? Well, it's the same way with God. And it's only in that sense that God permits certain things to happen in our lives, because he has already warned us in his word about the consequences of disobedience. He said, in essence, "If you walk in my statutes and keep my commandments, then I'll take sickness away from the midst of you, and the number of your days I will fulfill." I've also heard people say, "I was sick, and I learned a great lesson from it." Well, I'm sure that any child who has ever burned his hand on a hot stove learned a lesson too, amen? He learned not to put his hand on the hot stove. But that wasn't the way his parents would have chosen to teach him. And sickness and disease are not God's way of teaching us either. I'mma say that again. And sickness and disease are not God's way of teaching us either. That would be cruel, and God is not cruel, amen? The word of God should settle the issue of God's willingness to heal you. Say it out loud. Satan is the oppressor. Satan is the oppressor. Jesus is the deliverer. Jesus is the deliverer. With Jesus' stripes, I am healed, hallelujah! Jesus came that you might have life and have it more abundantly. That's in John 10:10. Because God's word declares that healing is in God's plan of redemption and that sickness and disease come from Satan, not God. You can know and be assured, not guessing, not a wish, or a coulda, shoulda. You can know and be assured that healing is God's will for you, amen? Here, it says, "Sickness came with the fall of man." But before we go to that, I wanna go to, let's go to Psalms 107:17 in the King James Version, Psalms 107:17. It says, "Fools, because of their transgression and because of their iniquities, are afflicted." The English Standard Version says, "Some were fools through their sinful ways, and because of their iniquities suffered affliction," amen? So we see sickness came with the fall of man. When Adam sinned, the curse came on the earth. Let's go to Genesis 3:15 through 19. Again, Genesis 3:15 through 19. The Curse of Man. Verse 15 reads, "And I will put enmity between thee and the woman, and between thy seed and her seed. It shall bruise thy head, and thou shalt bruise his heel. Unto the woman, he said, I will greatly multiply thy sorrow and thy conception. In sorrow thou shalt bring forth children, and..." and thy desire shall be to thy husband, and he shall rule over thee. And unto Adam, he said, 'Because thou hast hearkened unto the voice of thy wife and hast eaten of the tree of which I commanded thee, saying, Thou shalt not eat of it; cursed is the ground for thy sake; in sorrow shalt thou eat of it all the days of thy life.' Thorns and thistles shall it bring forth to thee, and thou shalt eat the herb of the field. In the sweat of thy face shalt thou eat bread, till thy return unto the ground, for out of it wast thou taken; for dust thou art, and unto dust thou shalt return.'" Adam, because of what Adam did, the fall of man, when Adam sinned, the curse came on the earth. Sickness and disease have the same origin. I'll say that again. Sickness and disease have the same origin. In Job 2 and 7, Satan afflicted Job. We know that it is Satan's job. He comes to kill, steal, and destroy. But John 10:10, which we read in the King James Version, says, "The thief cometh not, but for to steal and to kill and to destroy." But I am, I am, "come that thy, they might have life and they might have it more abundantly." Hallelujah. John 10:10's three-fold purpose is clear. Jesus was sent to destroy the works of the devil. Hallelujah. Jesus was sent to destroy the works of the devil. Let's go to 1 John 3 and 8. 1 John 3 and 8. I'm gonna be reading it from the English Standard Version. Whoever makes a practice of sinning is of the devil, for the devil has been sinning from the beginning. The reason the Son of God appeared was to destroy the works of the devil. Amen. Let's go to Luke 3:11 through 16. In the Amplified Classic Version, I'm gonna kinda paraphrase this, but there was a woman there in this scripture, for eighteen years that had had an infirmity caused by spirit, a demon of sickness. She was bent completely forward and utterly unable to straighten herself up or to look upward. But when Jesus saw her, he called, he called her to him and said to her, "Woman, you are released from your infirmities." Hallelujah. He said, "Woman, you are released from your infirmity." Then he laid his hands on her, and instantly she was made straight. Hallelujah. She stood up straight. She was straight and tall. That bent was gone out of her back. She stood up straight and tall, and she recognized. See, before, she was bent down, and she couldn't see. But when he laid his hands on her, and she straightened up, and she could look upward, hallelujah, she recognized and thanked and praised God, 'cause she knew who had put their hands on her. She knew that for eighteen years I have been bent over with this infirmity, but he laid his hands on me, and I'm straight now, and I'm looking up. So I got to give him praise. I got to give him glory for what he's done, because nobody but Jesus could take this bent out of my back, raise me up, so I can look up and look to him and to give him praise and honor and glory. Hallelujah. But the people around Jesus, they were upset. They said, "Because he was indignant." Jesus was indignant, because he healed on the Sabbath, said the crowd. There were six days, they said, on which to work, that work should be done on those six days. So come on those days and be cured. So they telling the people, "Come on those days, the six days." Is this, when you really have a need before God, do you want somebody to tell you to wait for six days, to come on six days? No, you wanna be able to go straight to the throne room, straight to the Father, so he can lay his hands on you in the Spirit? Or how? Hallelujah. But the Lord replied to him, saying, "You placatus, you hypocrites! Does not each one of you on the Sabbath loose his ox or his donkey from the stall and lead it out to water? And art not this woman, a daughter of Abraham, whom Satan has kept bound for eighteen years, be loosed from this bond on the Sabbath day?" Hallelujah. So we see, God didn't care what day it was. He saw a need, and he told her, he said, "Come, let me put my hands on you." And she was able to stand up straight. Hallelujah. Can you imagine? I mean, for eighteen years, you have been bent over. One translation said it was with arthritis, like arthritis, bent over, couldn't stand up straight for eighteen years. But all he did was say, "Come, come, come." He said, "I see you. I see ya." He said, "I feel you. I see what you're going through." He said, "I'ma lay my hands on you. I'ma touch you, and you gonna stand up straight." And that's just what she did. And what did she do, just like that man that was at the temple? She stood up straight, put that bent out of her back, and she started praising and leaping and giving God glory. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. So let's go to our next section, where it says, "Healing is a forever-settled subject." Healing is a forever-settled subject, a gift from God. Healing is a gift like salvation. It was paid for at Calvary. Here, the word salvation in the Greek is solteria. It means deliverance, safety, preservation, healing, and health. Glory to God. The gospel of Jesus Christ is the power of God unto deliverance. The gospel of Jesus Christ is the power of God unto safety. The gospel of Jesus Christ is the power of God unto preservation. The gospel of Jesus Christ is the power of God unto health and healing, and is the power of God unto healing and health. James 1:17, let's go there quickly. James 1:17. A gift from God. And it says, "Healing is a forever-settled subject." James 1:17 in the Amplified Classic, Part A, says, "Every good gift and every perfect, free, large, full gift is from above." Hallelujah. I'm gonna read that again. It says, "Every good gift and every perfect, free, large, full gift is from above." Acts 10:34, let's go there quickly. Acts 10:34 in the Amplified. "And Peter opened his mouth and said, 'Most certainly and thoroughly I now perceive and understand that God shows no partiality and is no respecter of person.'" Aren't you glad that God doesn't show any partiality? What he does for me, he'll do for you, he'll do for you, he'll do for you. Hallelujah. "And he's no respecter of person." And the last section, "Healing is the children's bread." Healing is the children's bread. Hallelujah. I'm gonna get my Bible here, and we're gonna be reading from Mark, Chapter 7, 25 through 30. And you know, this very same story about the Seraphinician woman is also found in Matthew. But we're gonna go to Mark 7, 25 through 30. Let me get over there. All right. It says, "For a certain woman, whose daughter had an unclean spirit, heard of him, and came and fell at his feet. The woman was a Greek, a Seraphinian by nation." That means she wasn't Jewish. She wasn't a Jew. "And she besought him that he would cast forth the devil out of her daughter. But Jesus said unto her, 'Let the children first be filled; for it is not meat to take the children's bread and to cast it unto the dogs.' And she answered him and said, 'Yes, Lord; yet the dogs under the table eat of the children's crumbs.'" Hallelujah. "And he said unto her, 'For this saying, go thy way; the devil is gone out of thy daughter.' And when she had come to her house, she found the devil gone out, and her daughter laid upon the bed." Amen? So we see here quickly, Jesus was in the region. It was a Gentile region. It was not of Israel. And the Gentile woman, non-Jewish, hears about him and comes begging. Jesus initially responds with a statement that kinda sounds harsh. "Let the children be fed first; for it is not right to take the children's bread and throw it to the dogs." But the woman humbly replies, "Yes, Lord." She was humble. She didn't have an attitude. She replied humbly. She said, "Yes, Lord, but yet even the dogs under the table eat the children's crumbs." Jesus is moved by her response and says, "For this statement, you may go your way. The demon has left your daughter." She returns home and finds her daughter healed. Jesus' mission was to Israel first. Jesus references to children, that refers to the Jews, God's chosen people. Bread symbolizes the blessings of God, healing and salvation. Dogs was a common, though derogatory, Jewish term for Gentiles. His mission at this stage was primarily to the Jews. He was saying Israel has priority. The woman didn't argue or take offense. She accepts her outsider status, but still appeals to God's mercy. She wasn't gonna leave there. She said, "She shows great faith, acknowledging that even a crumb of Jesus' power is enough. Just a crumb of Jesus' power is enough." Her, she shows great faith. Her persistence, humility, and faith contrast with many Jews who rejected Jesus despite being insiders. Hallelujah. But God's grace is for all. Jesus' response for this statement shows that faith, not ethnicity or status, is what moves him. Faith is what moved him. She doesn't walk away after being seemingly rejected. Her trust in Jesus, goodness, and power leads to her daughter's healing. It is an example of bold, humble, and persevering faith. Amen? Well, I pray that you were blessed. Amen. 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 Yes. Hallelujah. Oh, I tell you, God is good, isn't he? Have you received? Let me say that again. Have you received? Amen. Praise God. Well, this opportunity to prosper, amen. Praise God. I mean, though God's the same yesterday, today, and forever. Amen. He hadn't changed. He says, "Long as the earth remained, there would be seed, time, and harvest." He's still saying it today. And when you give, he said, he'll give back to us, good measure, pressed down, shaken together, and running over. But when we give, we give cheerfully. Amen. A prompt to do it, giver giving cheerfully. And then, well, how else are we supposed to give? Painfully. Why? Because he has given us seed to sow. Amen. And you, when you sow it, amen, guess what? You're not gonna give back what you put in it. You're gonna get more than enough. Amen. Praise God. If you need an offering envelope, please look on your seat there beside you. If you're not one there, our ushers and greeters will get you one. And we give three ways. Here, you have opportunity to give by PayPal. That's New Beginnings For CLC. Also via our website, that's newbeginningsforclc.org. Or you can mail your offering in to PO Box 32065A. That's in Flowood, Mississippi, 39232. Amen. Praise God. Hallelujah. I tell you what, I enjoy it. I enjoy it. Praise God. Hallelujah. You just gotta dig in. Hallelujah. Every word of God is full of life. Life-giving. Amen? Praise God. Hallelujah. We're thankful to the Lord for what he's doing here at New Beginnings. Amen? He's increasing us. Amen? A sower does what sows the word. Amen? And the word brings back, increase. Amen? Praise God. Well, it looks like you guys have done what you're gonna do it. Come here, your offering envelope. Please raise your hand. I mean, raise your offering up. We're gonna pray over it. Amen. Praise God. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you so much for giving us seed to sow. And as we sow, we don't do it begrudgingly or out of necessity, but with a cheerful prompt to do it hard. And Father, we lay hold of your promises. And all of your promises are yes and amen. You said that you would give back to us. Good measure, pressed down, shaken together, and running over shall men give unto our bosom. We receive it by faith in the name of Jesus, and we release our angels right now to go forth and bring us that which we have need of, not just for ourselves, but for the advancement of the kingdom. And in Jesus' name, we do give you praise. All in agreement, say amen. Amen. Praise God. You may receive the offering. Hallelujah. We wanna thank God for Minister Margaret. Amen? Hey, this was her first time teaching. Hallelujah. Did an awesome job, awesome job of teaching. Amen. Praise God. Now, you lay hold of that word regarding healing, 'cause the enemy, he'll come, and he'll give you a pain or whatever. Amen? 'Cause he comes immediately to steal the word. Amen? But we got what he looking for. That one, my granddaughter, she had this chant. She had a little cheerleader, so she said, "What you looking for? Or what you..." Yeah, 'cause I got what you looking for. I got the word. Amen? Praise God. Hallelujah. Well, glory to God. Amen? They're completing. Amen. Praise God. Hallelujah. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Pastor Logan. Amen? I am the senior assistant pastor here at New Beginnings. But for those who are viewing via our website, I mean via, Facebook Live. Via Facebook Live may not know me. So that's why I introduced myself. And so I'll be teaching righteousness tonight. Hallelujah. Righteousness. Amen. Praise God. Hallelujah. Let's bow here for a word of prayer. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you tonight and give you praise and glory for the opportunity to dive into your word regarding righteousness. We ask for the help of the Holy Spirit in the name of Jesus to anoint our ears to hear what the Spirit of the Lord was saying to us regarding this subject. And Lord, we'll be so careful to make it applicable to our lives in now and in the days to come. Help us to know who we are in Christ Jesus and what we have in him. And Father, we give you all the praise and glory for it in Jesus' name. Amen? Praise God. The book that we have, our books will be in next week. Amen? And also your syllabus for this class, we will have that next week as well. We're gonna be talking about the two kinds of righteousness. The book looks like this. Amen. Praise God. So tonight, I encourage you to take good notes. Amen? 'Cause I will recap next week. We're gonna talk about a part, this class tonight. Uh, we're gonna talk about, uh, apart, this class tonight, we're gonna talk about man as he is. We're gonna talk about the church's failure when it comes to righteousness. We're gonna talk about what righteousness mean, and also sin consciousness. Those are the four topics that we're gonna talk about tonight, amen. Are you ready? Well, let's just dig in. The first thing we said that where we have missed it, where we have missed it, uh, as believers, is that man as he is, man as he is, man has no approach to God, no approach to God, because of the sense of condemnation, has given him an inferiority complex, amen, that makes him a coward. A man without God is a coward, because he will not receive what God has for him. The enemy will come to him because he is not, had not been born again, does not have the Spirit of God, and he hears the devil better than he will hear God. And so he won't come and receive exactly what God has for us through the death, burial, and resurrection of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In fact, uh, uh, man as he is, uh, the, the enemy robs him of faith. He don't operate in faith, he robs him of faith in himself, in man, and God, and in the word. Sin consciousness holds man in bondage. He has no right to approach God, no right to approach God. That right was taken, amen, praise God, when Adam fell. Amen, man initially walked with God. Uh, man was in the Garden of Eden, amen? And then when man fell, man was separated from God. Amen, praise God. So that sense of guilt or inferiority, failure, weakness, makes him reason. How many of you have reasoned before? Amen. And what reasoning does? Reasoning leads to philosophy, and philosophy leads to humanism, and humanism is knowledge without God. No knowledge of God. So you don't approach God. You, uh, cowardly, you, you regress. You go back instead of moving forward to God. It happened in the Garden of Eden, amen, when Adam fell. Adam hid from God, amen. And so sin conscious makes you hide from God. It won't allow you to receive what God has for you, the goodness of God, the love of God. So that's how man is without God. Man is highly developed in sin consciousness, which is spiritual, which is a spiritual inferiority complex, a sense of unworthiness. He feels inadequate, that dominates him. Man, you ain't got no sin conscious. Praise the Lord. Amen, thank you so much. Uh, so, uh, so he is in union spiritually with God's enemy. You know who that is, that's the devil, right? Uh, his nature is enmity. And enmity is, you're hostile toward God. You are at war with God, you are at odds with God. And amen, so when that happens, amen, against God, man then without God is without hope. Any man that is without God is without hope. Amen, praise God. He is what? Spiritually dead. Now that, that, he walking around, we walking around, and, and I'm not, I'm saying this because we all were spiritually dead at one time. Amen, praise God, hallelujah. We're not judging or anything like that, but that was all of us. We partook of Satan's nature. Satan was our daddy, Satan was our God, amen? Because every man born after Adam was born into sin, amen. They were born separated from God, amen. So, so we didn't understand, praise God, how much God loved us. But how many know he loved us? He loved us. So we are, we partook of Satan's nature, and man has no standing with God. He has no citizenship, no legal right of appeal, and he is like a convict. Amen. That's when you're separated from God. That's man as he is in a nutshell. But let's talk about, uh, how the church has failed. The church has failed, uh, uh, in teaching man, uh, about righteousness. And we have been strong in teaching man his need for righteousness and his weakness and inability to please God. I don't know if you ever heard or have, uh, been to a church where they just hone in on your center, your center, your center. Amen, but never tell me how I can become born again. So we, we have that strong teaching of our need for righteousness. Uh, and I'm talking about the ecumenical church, not a church in particular, but the, the church at large teaches us who we are without God, but don't teach us who we are in God, amen. And so what happens is, on the flip side of that, the church has done a great job in teaching us against unbelief. Come on now. World conformity, and that means that the scripture, you know, when scripture says, in Romans twelve, be ye not conformed to this world, but be ye transformed by the renewing of your mind. They tell us what we have in the world, amen, but it teaches us, uh, don't teach us how we need to live in God's kingdom. And so what happens there? Uh, it says here, we, it'll teach us a lack of faith. So we know how faith come, faith comes how? By hearing, hearing by the word of God. So they, they teach us that that's how faith comes. But then they don't teach us that with that same faith, we can be born again. We can be the righteousness of God. But the church has not locked in and bringing forward the truth of who we are in Christ Jesus, or how righteousness and faith is available. So what I, what do I mean by that? If I don't know what I have, uh, I won't, um, actually ask for it. 'Cause I'm ignorant about what I have. I'm lacking in knowledge about what I have. And Hosea four six says that we are destroyed for a lack of knowledge. I tell you, it's a lot of believers, including myself, in times past, amen, uh, didn't know who I was in Christ, amen. Didn't even know if I was born again, because they told us back in, is your soul saved? And the soul is the seat of your mind, your will, and your emotions. So when you get born again, your spirit get born again, amen. Your soul stays the same. And if your soul, your mind, will, and emotions have not been renewed by the word of God, you can be a Christian and still be lacking in what God has for you. Amen? So, but we did hear this. We were familiar with, uh, church sermons and old hymns put out about our redemption. We heard this, it'll be all over. You'll get it in the sweet. We'll get some rest. That's right. Usually that after while is when we get to heaven. When we get to heaven. We'll get the victory when we get to heaven. We are going to overcome when we get to heaven. Or we'll sing this song, so don't throw nothing. We shall over. We already overcame. They just didn't know it when they wrote that song. We had overcome over two thousand years ago. Amen, praise God. So the church has taught us as Christians that we will only, in this earth, in this, while we're living, we'll only experience failure, sorrow, disappointment, and misery in this life. Amen, our prayers in, of old, they prayed those type of prayers. When I get down by the, uh, cheerleader Jordan. What about now? And the reason why, no, they're not throwing no shade on nobody. 'Cause they just lacked the knowledge of who and what Christ had done for us through his death, burial, and resurrection. They go, they say things like, we'll have peace after a while. Amen, uh, happiness. Uh, when I get to heaven, there ain't gonna be no more tears. No more tears. Now that's true right there. But guess what? We have been given everything now pertaining to life and godliness, and it comes through righteousness. So the question still remains with us is, when will we become more than conquerors? When will be, we be able to do the thing, all things through Christ? Will it be after a while, or will it be right now? And the answer is, right now. Amen, it's not futuristic. It's already been done. As Minister Margaret said regarding healing. Healing was secured over two thousand years ago. So was righteousness. Amen, when Jesus died on the cross. Now let's look at what righteousness mean. Righteousness is the ability to stand before God without any sense of inferiority or guilt. Amen, praise God. God has dealt with the sin problem through his son, Jesus Christ. Amen, so God himself made it possible on legal grounds for men who are spiritually dead to become a new creation to, by receiving the very nature and life of God through Jesus Christ. Let's look at some scripture regarding that. Go with me to Second Peter, chapter one and verse four. The King James Version says this. Uh, Second Peter, chapter one and verse four. It says, whereby are given unto us exceeding great and precious promises, that by these, by these what? The precious promises, you or ye might be partakers, underline that, highlight that, make a mental note, of the divine nature having escaped the corruption that is in the world through lust. It's just the opposite of what we said before. Spiritually dead men partake of Satan's nature. But born again men partake of the divine nature of God through Jesus Christ. Now, yeah, I told you to underline the word partake, partakers there. Partake comes from the Greek word, and I'm gonna spell it, M-E-T-O-C-H-O-S, and it's pronounced metochos, it, which means to share in, receive a part or a portion of something. In this case, when we got born again, we were a new creation in Christ Jesus, and we shared in the divine DNA of God through Christ Jesus. In other words, now, once, once we got born again, God is alive in us. We don't have to, uh, 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 go, uh, to the temple anymore. What if you don't make it to church? God is right there. Wherever you sit, God is there, amen? In me, in you. And, and he came in through Christ Jesus. And the life and the nature of God in itself is righteousness. In other words, we were wrong, but through the death, burial, uh, uh, and, and a resurrection of Lord Jesus Christ, we became right. We were going left, but then we turn and start to going right. We were walking wrong, but now we walking right. We took off that old, dirty, ragged sin nature and put on the garment of the Lord Jesus Christ. Now I am somebody. Say I'm somebody. What are you? You are the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus. That's who you are. You don't have to bag, you don't have to back up. You don't have to put your head down when you're walking. You are supposed to walk just like God walks. You don't have to have fear or an inferiority. An inferiority complex makes you put your head down. You won't walk up to the table to get what you need. Amen, it could be laid out there, but because, uh, the enemy have, uh, uh, clouded our thought pattern, we don't think who we are. We are God's own children. And he's not gonna hold anything from his children. Amen, praise God. So, uh, righteousness, uh, here, we partake of God's divine nature. We share in his DNA. We now have the righteousness of God, uh, on the inside of us. The person who receives the nature of God automatically becomes righteous, amen, through Christ Jesus. You all, how many you born again? That's everybody, right? So the moment you receive Jesus, you are righteous. You are righteous. You have been, in other words, let me say it this way. You have been made right with God. It doesn't matter who say what, or what you hear, you wrong, you not saved with. Listen, when you accepted Jesus Christ, amen, as your Lord and Savior, you were made right, amen. Well, let's look at this scripture right here, because guess what? God's work in Christ far exceed any damage done to us by Adam's fall. The new creation changed everything. The death, burial, and resurrection of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, was a game changer. It brought us out of darkness into light. Amen, praise God. It brought us out of death into life. And we are now living, amen, in God through Christ Jesus, amen. Let's look at Second Corinthians, chapter five and verse seventeen. Very familiar passage of scripture. In Second Corinthians, uh, five seventeen. Look what it says here, of five seventeen. Are you there yet? You getting there, okay. Amen, praise God. I have a tendency, when I get passionate about something, I, I get to running. So I'm gonna slow down here, amen. Listen, it says, it says, therefore. Whenever you see the word therefore in the Bible, amen, you ask yourself, what is it therefore? So it says, therefore, if any man be in Christ, he is a new creature. Old things, what, have what? Passed away. Behold, all things are, become new. Now when it says, old things are passed away, that means the previous spiritual condition that we were in now is gone. And now we are in a new spiritual condition, amen. So we ought not to be acting like the old when we are new. Amen, praise God. So what God has done in Christ has literally opened up for us a new world. Come on now. A new condition, and then given us a new heart. Our old heart was dirty, but now by the blood of Jesus, it's been washed. And we've got a new heart now, amen. Praise God, like God, hallelujah. And the good news is that the old have passed away, and the new has come, and the revolutionary revelation really has changed everything. You, it, it, listen, you are not that old person. I remember this friend of mine that had, he would told me about his old life, how, who he was and, and back in the day and what he did, and I ain't gonna name none of the things he did, 'cause he's old and passed away. But we were working together, and he was telling me everything, and I said, you just a, and I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna say the word. I said, you just a blank. He said, oh, no. He said, uh-uh, no, I'm not. I said, yes, you are. He said, no, I'm not. What he was saying to me, that used to be me. But now I'm not that person, 'cause I've been what? Born again, amen. And it came to me one day, it's, it was a year or so later, I was meditating on that. And I remember what he said, and I said, he is right because of this scripture. Second Corinthians, five seventeen. Let's drop down, uh, to verse twenty-one in Second Corinthians, chapter five, verse twenty-one. Verse, uh, Second Corinthians, five twenty-one. This is what it says. For he hath made him, that's God, he is God. For he hath made him, Christ, come on now, to be what? Sinned for us who knew no sin. Jesus had no sin. Oh, what manner of love is this? He had no sin. Why? That we might be what? Made the righteousness of God in him. We are now, because of what Jesus did, we are approved by God. I mean, you, some people looking for approval. But don't look for approval from the world. You are approved of God. Don't look to be accepted by somebody else because you've been accepted by God. And now you are in right fellowship by, with God. Through who? Jesus Christ. Oh, what he did on the cross was absolutely monumental. Amen. We were on our way to hell, but because of what he did, he made us right with God, and now heaven is our future. Hallelujah. And can I tell you something else? We are supposed to be living in this We are supposed to be living in this earth like we are supposed to be in heaven. And the only reason we not living that way is because we don't have an understanding that we are the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus, amen. So with the gift of righteousness, amen, we can boldly approach the throne of grace. All sin wouldn't allow us to approach. That's why that curtain was hanging up in the temple. Only the high priest could go behind that curtain. Amen. The, the, the children of Israel came in the temple yard praising God, amen, and worshiping God. However, only the high priest could go behind the veil and offer the sacrifice of the blood of a lamb without spot of blemish. Amen, but on the cross, Jesus took our old sinful self, amen, in exchange and made us the very righteousness of Christ. Amen, of God, excuse me, of God in Christ. And so let's look at Ephesians, chapter three. Ephesians, chapter three and verse twelve. Praise God, Ephesians three and twelve. Hallelujah. God is good, isn't he? Ephesians three and twelve. It says here, "In whom," when you see that word, "in whom," it's talking about Christ. "In whom," or "in Christ," "we have boldness and access with confidence by the faith of him," who? Jesus. Now we can come boldly to the throne of grace without any sense of inferiority, without any sense of guilt, without any sense of shame. The old spiritual dead Sandra, come on now, couldn't do that. But now that I'm born again, I can come boldly to the throne of grace. And so man might not know it. He might not even take advantage of what God has done for us through Christ Jesus. But it's true, "If any man be in Christ," nevertheless, he is a new creature. You might not take advantage of it. And some people don't even know it, but it's still true, isn't it? Amen. So, uh, uh, down through the ages, man has been under the curse of spiritual death, at which gave birth to sin consciousness. Spiritual dead people cannot stand in God's presence. We see how God illustrated that fact in the Old Covenant. The high priest went into the holies of holies once a year, as I said. And then only when he had, was covered, he went to make a yearly atonement for spiritual dead Israel. Now that word, "atonement," mean to cover. So that the, the, the blood of goats, bulls, and lambs, that covered the sin of the people once a year. But the atonement was like, everything that you and I did was up under a rug in the middle of the floor. It wasn't removed. It was covered. It was just covered up. And every time I walk, I would stumble and fall. Come on now, somebody. Everywhere you fall, because you had to wait till, once a year, that that atonement took place. But thanks be unto God, when Jesus died on the cross, it wasn't covered anymore. It was remitted. It was removed, and now we can walk in the righteousness of God. Don't you thank God for sending Jesus Christ? Now let's talk about sin consciousness in a more detail. Sin consciousness, as we have learned, came with the fall of man in the Garden of Eden. And, and consciousness mean that you have an awareness or a perception of yourself, amen. Awareness or a perception of yourself. Man has an awareness, spiritually dead, of his sins, and a perception of that sin. But how did man fall? And we know that, but let's read it anyway. Let's go to Genesis, chapter two, verses fifteen. We're gonna read verse fifteen through seventeen. Because this is where it all began, where sin conscious originated, with the fall of man. In Genesis, chapter two, verses fifteen, start reading there. "And the Lord God took the man and put him into the garden of Eden, to dress it and to keep it." Praise God. "And the Lord God commanded the man, saying, 'Of every tree of the garden thou mayest freely eat,'" verse seventeen. "'But of the tree of the knowledge of good and evil thou shalt not eat of it; for in the day,'" come on, underline that, "'that thou eatest thereof, thou shalt surely die.'" Praise God. Those were the instructions. That is what God commanded man. Praise God. Hey, you have access to every tree in the garden, but that one right there, do not touch it. Amen. Don't touch it, amen, don't eat it, none of that. It's just, ooh, glory to God. Let's not be too hard on Adam. God done told us something not to touch too. Amen. But let's look at Genesis, chapter three. Let's go over to the next chapter. Because they ate of that tree. In Genesis, chapter three, verses one through seven, it says here, glory to God. "Now the serpent was more subtle," that word subtle there mean crafty. Amen. "'Than any beast of the field which the Lord God had made.'" And he, meaning Satan, the serpent, said unto the woman, "Now we have a conversation going on. We don't need to be talking, but yet the conversation has begun." "Yes," he said, "yes, God said, 'you shall not eat of every tree of the garden.'" And the woman said unto the serpent, "We may eat of the fruit of the trees of the garden, but of the fruit of the tree which is in the midst of the garden, God has said, 'you shall not eat of it; neither shall you touch it lest you die.'" Now she knows what. Cuz guess what? God done told Adam, Adam done told her. Guess right? "And the serpent said unto the woman," now we on a spiral downhill. The serpent, why? Because he's crafty. Come on now. He getting you to talk, and he gonna come back with something opposite of what God is saying, with a little bit of God in it. Come on now, make you think it's God. So, "And the serpent said unto the woman, 'You shall not surely die.'" That's against God. I always have learned this though. When I get a thought, praise God, I'm believing God for something. And anything that come in my mind, cuz that's how the devil attacks you, right? This thought come to me, if it don't line up with the word, I'm kicking it out. Amen. Cuz the serpent is agreeing. Here he said, he says, "You shall not surely die." That's opposite of what God said. "For God doth know in the day you eat thereof," he's adding to the narrative. "Then your eyes shall be open, and you shall be as gods, knowing good and evil," verse six. "And when the woman saw that the tree was good for food, and that it was pleasant to the eyes, and a tree to be desired, to make one wise, she took of the fruit thereof and did eat, and gave also unto her husband with her, and he did eat." "And the eyes of them both were opened, and they knew that they were naked, and they sewed fig leaves together and made themselves apron." So here, Satan accomplished his goal. His goal was to separate Adam from God. That was the big goal right there. And he did it with a narrative. He, Adam went from being the righteousness of God to being unrighteous. He went from dark, he went from light to darkness. And he went from, uh, life to death. Spiritually dead men cannot stand in the presence of God. So what did Adam do? He hid. He was a coward. He ran. He, he had guilt. He had shame. He had inferiority. He now know he was naked. He didn't have to know he's naked, cuz he was covered with the glory of God. Now the glory has lifted. And that's what we have, if your righteousness makes you aware, you perceive, it makes you aware who you are in Christ. No matter what the devil comes to you with, whatever narrative, you are supposed to open up your mouth and declare who you are in Christ. "I am," he says, "you're sick. I am healed by the stripes of Jesus." You got a bad report from the doctor, you're gonna be dead in six months. "I shall live and not die, because I am the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus. I have a right, I have a privilege, amen, to live." That's what spiritual righteousness is. Every spiritual failure can be traced to sin consciousness. Sin consciousness destroys faith. It destroys the initiative in the heart. It gives man an inferiority complex, and it makes man afraid of God and himself. He has no sense, a spiritual dead person, an unrighteous person, has no sense of his own legal right to stand in the Father's presence without condemnation. And that's why most people, when they miss God, they run from God, because the devil have made inroads into their life and convinced them that you cannot approach God because you did this and you did that. You don't even deserve to go to church, cuz he wanna cut that word off from you, because you might hear the word of God that will set you free. Know the truth, and the truth will make you free. So he'll cause you to run and hide. He'll cause you not to even come to hear the word of God. You won't do anything, because he has now got a stronghold on you. The key is, keep speaking what God says about you. Know who you are and whose you are. So, "Well, I don't care." Somebody, somebody, I said this to somebody. I said, cuz they were telling me what somebody else's children were doing. Maybe they was trying to talk about mine, cuz you don't know what they doing. But I knew who I was. I knew who my children were. And I had studied the word of God. And when you study the word of God about who you are in Christ, the righteous, that word gets down in your heart. And at the moment that you needed, the Holy Ghost will pull it up. And they were telling me about, "Ooh, so-and-so kids did this, child, so-and-so kids did that." I said, "Hold up." I said, "Let me tell you something. If they came and told me that my children stole Jesus off the cross, I'll say they did something good, cuz they got Jesus. But let me tell you this. The Bible tells me that the seed of the righteous is blessed, and the generation of the upright is delivered." Well, I ain't mean for you to go that deep. Now, don't come to me then with. So it makes you afraid of God. And you gotta know what your legal right is. God has provided, through redemption, that curse, as a, that, that, um, sin consciousness is a curse and a disease. And if you allow it to be prevalent in your life, it will take hold of all of you. So we gotta stop it at the get-go, right? So God has made provision for us through his son, Jesus Christ. John one twelve, St. John, chapter one and verse twelve. He's given us the power to become the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus. St. John one twelve. And St. John one twelve from the King James Version says, "But as many as received him," who? Christ. "To them," say, "that's me." "Gave he power." Come on, that word, "power," there mean right. You got a right. And you got not only a right, but you got the authority and the privilege to become the sons of God, even to them that what? Believe upon his name. That's what made you righteous, you and I. When we believed upon the name of Jesus Christ, we took Jesus as our Lord and Savior. The moment we did that, we became the righteousness of God. And as a result, we were adopted into the family of God. And as an adoptee into the family of God, we have a legal right to whatever our father have left us in inheritance. Not when we get to heaven, right here, right now, amen. We have an inheritance. We not only have been adopted into the family, we are right with God. We're the righteousness of God. We are heirs of God and joint heirs through Christ Jesus. And let me tell you something else what he did. When Jesus died, amen, praise God, he left his last will and testament. If you don't show up at the reading of the will, you won't know what you got. So you, "I'm the righteous of God." Well, what does that mean? Are you, you, you know what you got? You deserve healing. Come on now. You deserve to be blessed. Why? You are privy, you know, the people talking about, "Wow." They are so privileged. We as believers are so privileged. Come on now. Why? Because we are new creatures in Christ Jesus. Amen, praise God. The old things have been passed away, and all things have become brand new. One translation of 2 Corinthians five seventeen says this. It says that, "We are a new creature that never existed before." I love what pastor says, he talking about, "You looking, you so new to yourself, you got to seek." Is that me? Yes, amen. You are brand spanking new in Christ Jesus. And you have an inheritance. And you must know who you are, whose you are, and what you received when you were made right, amen. So this sense of unworthiness, this sense of guilt, this sense of shame, it is there to rob us of our peace of mind, amen, and makes our prayers ineffective. A sin conscious person cannot receive what God has for them, because our faith won't work. So if you are conscious of your sin, let me just say this. The Holy Spirit just released this in my spirit. If you have, in your past, and if it's still coming up, your past, if it's still coming up, that's the devil trying to get you, amen, to not know who you are in Christ. And you've got to open up your mind. You cannot argue with the devil with your mouth closed. He'll run a muck in your, you've got to open up your mouth and start talking. "I am the righteousness of God." That was the old me. And then he'll send somebody by, "Child, you remember when we..." "No, I don't remember nothing, cuz I'm a new creature in Christ Jesus. That old life have been passed away." Amen. Don't mosey up to him, don't go out with him, don't drink with him. Hey, duh-uh. Tell him, say, "No, that ain't me, cuz I'm the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus." Now listen, man's attempt to quiet their sin conscious, these are things that man will do. They will go to church. Going to church will not quieten your sin consciousness. It's a good thing to go to church, amen, but the devil will still talk to you. You have to know. It was written so that you may know who you are. Doing penance, that means you are punishing yourself, self-inflicted punishment. Now some religions, we are not religious. We are Christians, amen. A religious people, you've seen in other cultures, where they are tied tin and glass, and they'll beat themselves till they bleed. They're trying to make themselves right before God, when Jesus already been equipped with a cat of nine tails. He already took care of it. He got beat thirty-nine stripes, save one. We don't have to do that, amen. We don't have to do that, amen. Praise God. Fasting or giving away money. Amen, praise, it's good to be generous. But guess what? That won't take away your sin consciousness. Amen, praise God. Neglecting their bodies won't take a bath. All you gonna be doing is stinking and still got a sin conscious. Lacerating their bodies or cutting themselves. That's man's way of trying to quieten their sin consciousness. The only method that will quieten your sin conscious is the blood of Jesus. He did it. He took that so that we can become like him. It was the great exchange. Amen, praise God. And so there are two kinds of sin consciousness. One is the man who has never been born again, we talked about that, has no legal right to stand before God as he is, he separated from God. And the other is an underdeveloped Christian who has never grown beyond the state of babyhood. That means you, we got born again, uh, we have Jesus in our heart, but we have never developed in knowing who we are in Christ Jesus and what Jesus did for us on the cross. And therefore, we do not partake of all the rights and privileges and blessings that God has secured for us through the death, burial and resurrection of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. You see, the spirit, the, the spirit bears witness with our spirit that we are the sons of God in Romans, chapter eight and verse sixteen. So, well, I don't know if I'm the, if, if I am righteous or not. Because some people that I've heard this say to me, well, I'm not Jesus Christ. No, you not Jesus Christ, but Christ is in you. The hope of glory. I'm just a poor weak worm of the dust. I am a sinner, I'm just a sinner saved by grace. No, I'm you either one or the other. Are you just a sinner or are you saved by grace? So when we, uh, uh, see people or hear people say that, and you have a relationship with them, not to judge them, but say, brother, sister, you born again? Yes, you are the righteousness of God. You are no longer a sinner. You now have been saved, you're in the family of God. Amen. So we wanted, we want you to understand in these lessons, uh, make it applicable to your life because you're hearing, faith come by hearing. And you are hearing now that you are the righteousness of God. The enemy would turn up the heat. But you've got to say, I'm going back to what I learned and apply it to my life. I'm no longer a sinner. I've been saved, I'm now the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus. And I lay hold of all that God has for me. Because now, uh, I believed upon the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. I am his son, I am his daughter. And I not only, uh, this has not only been secured for me, but it is part of my inheritance package. I've read the will, I'm in the will, and it's laid out for me what I received in the will, and I'll take it now. Amen, that's your class for tonight. Amen, praise God. So, uh, oh, just before we go, uh, just a couple of announcements I want to make you, uh, aware of. Amen. Y'all know it's layman's tonight, amen. We're gonna have a church cleanup, October the eleventh at ten o'clock AM. Bring your work clothes, join us, cleaning up the house of God. Also Saturday, October the eighteenth, the lioness are gathering, our fresh manner. Amen. A, a meeting will be held with the pastor Leslie. There will be a great outpouring of the Holy Spirit. Don't forget about Pastor Leslie's birthday, amen, coming up, amen. Uh, all of our department heads, amen. That's going to be celebrated October the twenty-sixth, amen, twenty twenty-five, that morning. And also on that same day, that afternoon, we're gonna have our Harvest Festival. Don't forget to bring some candy for the kiddies. Amen, praise God, the box is over there. And we are in effect in that candy drive. Oh, we have outreach training coming up, amen, November the first, amen. And we also have a water baptism coming up. So if you are interested in getting water baptized, praise God, uh, we, I have a sign-up sheet. Sign-up sheet somewhere over there, but you can sign up to, uh, be water baptized. That's it, let's stand to our feet. Take a neighbor by the hand, say, neighbor, I'm so glad I came. Neighbor, know this. You are the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus. So have no sin consciousness. You've been made right with God. Neighbor, know this. God loves you. I love you. Pastor Wright loves you and be blessed.